This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, conference is being recorded. Okay, yep, now I got everybody up on the screens. All right, good afternoon, everyone. And I will call the meeting to order for our Monday, October 12th work session. And could we, and I think Gabe is on, can we get a roll call, Gabe?
Yes. Counselors Coburn.
Here.
Alex Johnson II.
Here.
Bessie Johnson, Olson.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
And Callen.
Here.
Five counselors present, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you, Gabe. Business from the public, there was not anybody that had signed up unless there's somebody that had come on that needed to bring an item forward, but I'm not seeing anybody. Not very many on our screen this evening.
Yep.
Okay, all right. So then next, we have the work without permit fee methodology. Jonathan, I think I saw that you came on. There you are, okay. Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and counsel. Can I get screen check of abilities?
You should have it now, Jonathan. You should have it now, Jonathan.
Perfect, thank you. So hopefully, you can see the PowerPoint presentation. So as we had met with you guys a couple of weeks ago, you'd asked us to come back with the different options that were available for work that was done without permits and what we are allowed to charge, what our current methodology is with municipal code. So we put those together currently. The two options that we have available to us are an investigation fee and civil penalties. Under the investigation fee, back in 2013, the legislature changed the allowable methodology to the current that we'll be talking about. Prior to that, it was what you guys may have heard in the past, which was double feeing them. So whatever the permit fee was, it was just to double that and move on. In the current situation, we have to charge either the actual average cost of providing code enforcement or code compliance, or the actual cost for the individual investigation. The legislature also put into statute two times that the investigative fee cannot be applied. The primary one, and the one that happens quite often, is for emergency repairs. And then they added a fair amount of sideboards on it. So for repair for health, safety, prevention of property damage, or fiscal harm. And the permit is obtained within five business days. And then anywhere in the codes or laws that permits are required, but the work can start prior to obtaining those permits. So for us locally, the municipal code was amended in 2016 to include an investigation fee of $70 per hour plus a $30 administrative surcharge, or $150, whichever is greater. As with statutory language, that investigative fee would not be applied if the work was an emergency repair and the application was submitted within five business days. And then currently, the investigative fee is not applied across the board. It is generally not being applied when we get voluntary compliance. It is something that we use more for when we have to move to additional steps, like notices of violation and those sorts of things. But the initial correspondence of please obtain a permit, we choose not to. Currently, apply that fee. And then we also have the ability to do civil penalties. So, and this is in addition to, does not have to replace. A civil penalty shall not exceed $5,000 per offense or $1,000 a day for continuing offenses. And when imposing the civil penalty, the noticing and hearing rights of the statutory language of 183 would need to be followed. Just as a fair amount of additional language that we would have to make sure that our notices and stuff included if we use that more regularly. And then the maximum penalty can only be imposed upon finding that the person has engaged in a pattern of violation. So looking at how the state uses their program for themselves, they actually developed a penalty matrix. So if you're a first time offender, it's one set of penalty. If it's second and third, then it goes up. And then they already have a predetermined, similar to what we'll talk about in a second for ourselves, the amount that gets stayed if you resolve it in the timeframe that was specified. So for us, the municipal code has a multi-tier approach. Currently licensed contractors and individuals receiving payment, so as we're referring to them, just unlicensed contractors, have a higher civil penalty imposed at $1,000. Homeowners doing the work themselves have a lower penalty imposed of $500. When the correction is made within 10 business days of the citation, the penalty is reduced to the greater of one quarter of the penalty or double the permit fee, whichever is greater. Where an individual has repeated violations within the 12-month period, the penalty is doubled. And where the violation is determined to be an imminent threat to life, safety of the occupants or the public, the penalty is doubled. So based on our previous discussions, based on our previous discussions, the memo had some questions you may want to consider. I'll just kind of highlight some of those elements. So does counsel want the building division to proactively search for work without permits? If that is something you would like us to do, we'd have to acquire additional staffing to monitor activities and to verify the permits. Does this counsel want the building division to apply the investigative fee more regularly on work without building permits? And then does counsel want building division to apply the civil penalties more routinely for work without permits? At the current moment, it's really to the point where we weren't able to get compliance and we are turning it over to Shaun's where we kind of draw that line. And then does counsel want to increase the civil penalty within the limits allowed by statute? Those are the questions that kind of came out of our investigation. As the memo says, there's some needed tweaks that we'll be likely putting forward in future council meeting to adjust some of the little nuances that have changed since the last time Title 18 was reviewed for civil penalties and make sure they meet current standards.
Okay. Is that it, Jonathan?
That is it.
That is it.
All right, so I think I'm getting feedback.
I think I'm getting feedback.
Hang on, let me review myself.
Yeah. Okay, is that better?
Yep.
Do you want to counsel, what do you want to do? How about the first bullet for that question? Do you have, or do you have questions for staff before you kind of delve into those questions? And just a sec, I only see four. I got Rich on here. Oh, Rich? Yeah. Rich?
Yes, I do. Is there, I recognize having, if somebody's being paid to do something and they're not doing it, that makes them unprofessional. And I understand charging them more. I guess the question is, is there a connoisseur available that we could make sure the contractor pays that? If you're Joe Schwartz and you have a contractor that you say, hey, I need to put the addition on, and the contractor's going to do the permitting and they don't get the permits, who ends up paying that? May well be the guy who is the homeowner. I mean, stuff flows downhill. I'm wondering if there is a way we can say, if the contractor didn't do it, the contractor has to pay it without passing it on. And I don't know that that is, if there's any way we can do that.
I'm not sure if there's a way to capture exactly what your question is in the context of ensuring that they didn't pass it on. But the way the statute was written, the way our municipal code's written, and Shaun, please chime in if you feel the need, it would be a civil penalty if we moved to that portion of it against the individual, not necessarily against the property owner.
Is that it, Rich? Okay, all right.
I was on mute, I'm sorry. But I had a really good, I had a really good thing going there. No, I'm just kidding. There is, there is, assuming these contractors are licensed, Rich, then if someone actually was doing work without pulling the permits, normally the permit cost is passed on to the owner anyway. But let's hypothetically say they said they were going to get permits, charged the owner for the permit, and then actually didn't get the permit. That would be something that would be turned over to the CCB as well, if they were, assuming they were a licensed contractor. And so there are some mechanisms in place to kind of protect the owner from that, so.
And to add on to that, if they were receiving payment acting as a contractor and unlicensed, CCB would have additional penalties that they would impose also.
Okay, Alex, you had a question?
That helps, Shaun, thank you. One thing I was concerned about is the poor homeowner that paid for those permits to be paid, and then the contractor gets a penalty and he just walks away from the job. So that's something we need to make sure that the homeowner is protected as well.
Well, and the CCB and Jonathan, I'll defer to your expertise on that. But the CCB, there's funds in place that you can make a claim to the board on that, that, you know, and then they actually will go after the contractor to recoup that amount of money, so.
Yeah, so each contractor is required to have a bond and then insurance if they need it on the other end. But they can go after their bond if they need to.
Okay, thank you.
Bill?
I'm actually going to yield to Mike. He had his pencil up two or three times, but then if you could come back to me after mine. Yeah, my concern from bringing this up is, is that a lot of these contractors that do one-day jobs, i.e. equipment replacement, panel replacements, electrical panel replacements, plumbing permits, jobs that don't take very long, they can go in, do the job, get out without getting a permit, and the city never knowing about it. And what they're doing is playing the odds because they know the odds of them getting caught are very, very slim. So they play that game for a year or so and maybe caught at one time, but it's no big deal because they've done this for 120 or 150 times throughout the year. And each permit averages $100. The fines don't, so they gamble. And that's, that's what brought this up. So yes, the CCB has other actions and other ways to go after it. But I think if the city started going after some of these contractors and started bringing in the CCB, these unscrupulous individuals would not be in business anymore. So going down the list, I just think the cities should find a way to be more aggressive at collecting the, or catching these people that aren't playing by the rules when everybody else is. That's the bottom line, is I think the city, we need to find a way to level that playing field. Sure, there will always be people that aren't honest out there playing the game, but I'd like to see us try to find a way to level that playing field for contractors that are honest.
What approach would you suggest, Mike?
Well, I don't think we got the place to hire people, but I think we need to aggressively go after it when we find out there's no permit fees and apply, and apply the civil penalties to the full extent of the law. And change the counsel's, the civil penalties to the limits, the fuller limits allowed by the statute. And you do it two or three times to a couple of these people. Everybody else will figure out, hey, we better not do this because this is what's going to happen. So that's how I feel about it.
So would you suggest then on number bullet three or four?
Number three, yes, and number four, yes. And two, three, and four, all of those, yes. Two, three, and four, all of those. Be more aggressive with it because pretty soon it's going to stop.
So you're saying, do those without hiring staff or just?
Yeah, do everything, yes, do everything we can without hiring staff.
By complaint basis?
Right, which would be two, three, and four.
Right, which that's what we do for a lot of our codes and ordinances anyway. It's more on a complaint basis, so that would work. Dick and then Bill.
I think Bill was ahead of me, but whatever.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Dick, that's fine.
Would I need a permit to replace a washer in my faucet in my kitchen sink?
No.
No. Would I need a permit to fix a leaky toilet, put a new bulb in there?
No.
Do I need a permit to replace a toilet?
No, you would not. On single-family housing, that's all within the scope of just general repair.
Where do I start needing a permit?
So any structural alterations? So for single-family, it really is, once you get into structural alterations, altering the plumbing or electrical systems and stuff. So basically, from our vantage point, it would be the main shut-off valves from, for your sink and those things. You can replace those, but you can't change the piping behind it except for some very small limitations for freeze damage. And if you start changing that, that's when you would then start triggering the permit. Same with the outside, you're.
I guess I'm glad I bought my house in the good old days when we didn't have permit police.
Okay, Bill?
Well, and Dick, just to respond to that, the issue with electrical permits is fire and safety. I mean, it's not going to burn down a house. But you sure would if bad electrical were. I agree with Mike, I think two, three, and four. I don't think I want to try and hire people. And it, you probably wouldn't generate enough revenue to pay for that position. So that's just a further drain on the building department budget. But I do think that all the inspectors certainly ought to be authorized to stop at a project when they see somebody working and inquire if they have a permit. I mean, not that they're out looking for them, but you're driving around from job to job for scheduled inspections and it's like, hey, what's going on over there? You know, years ago, I added on to the house and somebody said, are you going to get a permit? And I said, absolutely. Steve Bryant drives by every day. Of course, he was the old city manager. Even I noticed the work. Another thing, I'll tell you, another consequence of being caught, at least from the electrical part of it, is you can turn these people into the electrical board and you get called up there two or three times and you might find yourself losing your contractor's license. They are very, very serious. So that's, that's my thoughts on that. I do think it needs to be tougher than just doubling the permit fee. You forget to buy a $50 permit and it's $100. Like Mike says, they're just gambling, it's no big deal. I hadn't thought about what Rich said about passing on to the customer and the customer wouldn't even know. So those are my thoughts.
Okay, Mike?
On, a couple of things, Dick. On plumbing, I know you were talking about plumbing. One of the, one of the reasons you want to get a permit when you're starting to change pipings is you can get cross-contamination and start doing all kinds of nasty things into your building and into the city water system if things aren't done correctly. And the other thing, I carry a boiler, a pressure vessel boiler license. It's number one, very difficult to get. And number two, one of the requirements of that license is, is that if I see somebody doing pressure vessel or boiler work without the proper permit, I'm required to turn them in at the risk of losing my license to do that type of work. So it's not really permit police, Dick. It's for the health and well-being and the safety of your neighbors and everybody else in the community, from fire, from cross-contamination, from buildings falling down, all kinds of different things. So I hope that helps a little bit, Dick.
Bill?
Yeah, another way, Sharon, you were asking, Mike, well, how would you go about this? I think that we ought to partner with the contractors because the contractors get tired of this too. You hear about it, you know that some of these guys that aren't playing by the rules. And that's just another source of input to the city. Encourage the contractors to work with the city. Hey, we want to catch these guys and find them just like you do. If you hear of somebody, if you see of somebody, call us, let us check it out and see if there's any truth to it. There's nothing wrong with that. I've been stopped many times on projects. They'd come in and say, do you have a license? Because all electricians are required to be licensed. It's not a union, non-union deal, it's state law. Do you have a permit? And there's nothing wrong with keeping people, and that's what the laws are.
Okay, so is counsel wanting to go with, basically more on an enforcement with the civil penalty on a complaint-type basis? And I mean, I do think once the word would get out there that if somebody or a contractor saw somebody that was not getting a permit, they would probably all just be able to report it. But most of our, a lot of our ordinances anywhere are on a complaint basis, so it does work. So, but is this what the counsel wants to go?
Yeah, I support two, three, and four.
Okay, so timing for staff to come back with an ordinance? Or a resident? What would you prefer?
Does it really make a difference? I can actually be done more instantaneous because a lot of the pieces are already put in there. We'll need to work with Shaun and develop some additional language to clarify Title 18 a little bit more to make sure that we're in line with the statute completely. And then we can put together a package with the proposed maximum penalty so we can put in through statute. So we can bring that back to you reasonably shortly.
Okay, would you like to make a motion then, counsel, to direct staff for this? I think it'd be good to have it in a motion.
I shall move.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in a second. Staff will be bringing back an ordinance and any discussion anymore?
Mike, you're getting really lazy with your motions.
He wants 2020 to be over just like the rest of us.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, that's a, that's a four to one motion, so carried. But, okay, all right. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Next would be Matthew, and this is for potential opportunities for on-street parking. I think counsel, you did all get a letter emailed to you from Lisa Grotto from Albany Downtown Association, mentioning about how the businesses really appreciated being able to have the outside dining and to see if we can come up with some on-street dining. So Matthew, where I haven't seen you yet on the video, so.
He's there, Mayor.
Okay, I'm trying to find you. There you are, up on top. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and counsel. So as the mayor indicated earlier this year, with the restrictions that were put into place with COVID, staff worked to create and initiate what we refer to as the seat program, which allowed for temporary placement of tables and chairs for outdoor seating on our sidewalks. There was a retail component of that as well. Right now, we have currently 10 businesses participating in that program. It's been fairly well-received, as was indicated. Earlier, early September of this year, several businesses had met with Lisa, the Downtown Association, and expressed an interest, as she suggested in her email, of potentially doing some on-street dining, which could include utilizing some on-street parking, potentially even street closures, or lane closures, I should say. And why the concept of doing something like this is not new in our current environment or even pre-COVID, would be new to the city of Albany. And in order to successfully, you know, create something like this without undue liability or burden being placed on the city, it would definitely take a measured and well-thought-out approach. So staff has conducted an initial meeting with internal stakeholders to discuss the concept and identified a multitude of questions and items that a program like this would need to address. And while we can look at other jurisdictions and what they've done for ideas, you know, each community is a little bit different. We have our own unique needs and restrictions, so there's not really this kind of one-size-fits-all solution. There certainly is some starting points. So, you know, if counsel's interested in creating or exploring the creation of a program that would allow for on-street dining, that like I say, would take up potentially the on-street parking that we currently have, or even potentially portions of a lane, we can definitely prepare something to bring back for discussion and review with an ultimate goal of having something in place for spring of summer of next, next year, when the weather's a little bit more conducive to outdoor seating. So really, I'm kind of here to ask counsel if they'd like us to begin pulling something together and answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, questions? Yeah, Alex, and then Bill?
I think it'd be a great idea to do that. I've looked at those reports of other cities doing something like that. And a lot of businesses were able to stay open because they had the flexibility of using outside parking, outside dining. So I'm also, I'm all for it.
I think it'd be great. Anybody else? Bill's got a thumb up, thumbs up, and so does Mike. Oh, Rich? Yes, yeah, go ahead.
How, is there some way that we can make sure that, well, if you start closing lanes, that means some people win and some people lose sometimes? I mean, if you're going to close a whole bunch of them, so everything's really slow. I don't think it'd be a big deal. But is there going to be a method to determine, do people get to change? Do you get to take turns or some way so it's not the same people all the time doing the same thing? When the guy down a little ways or on the other side doesn't get to because they're closing that lane? You see where I'm going here?
Yeah, and that's something, really appreciate the comment, Counselor Callen. You know, that when we met with our internal staff group, we came up with almost two dozen different kind of questions and items that we would need to have to address and kind of, you know, what are the other impacts to businesses and how this program is even set up? Certainly, some of the questions that will need to be answered.
Okay, that's what I needed, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? So it kind of looked like a thumbs up to sort of explore some more and look into what we can do, Matthew. But yeah, as you said, we do have time because it probably wouldn't be, you know, anybody wants to have any outdoor dining until next spring, so.
Yeah.
But I think it'd be great. I think it's great. Make it look like also our streets are more active and. It make it look like also our streets are more active and a lot more energy when you got people outside dining, and I think it really helped out the businesses this summer. So any other questions? Everyone's okay then? Directing staff to proceed? Okay, all right. You got enough there?
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, okay, next item is Seth, and this is business registration discussion.
Hey, Mayor.
There you are.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, great, I'll just jump in then. Thanks for your time this afternoon. But let me just say, the COVID-19 pandemic has taught us a lot of things and, and in many cases, pointed out some of our deficiencies. For example, my ability to be an elementary school and middle school teacher and still be a loving parent has been challenged, for sure. But I would also say that our collective ability to reach the business community, I mean, for them to reach us in this time of need has lacked significantly, in part because we lack a business registration here at the, at the city of Albany. I've been at the city now for January, January is going to be three years, I cannot, can't believe it even. And one thing, you know, I was asked to do, as the rest of the, the managers and directors are always asked to do, is to look at ways to deliver our services in more efficient and effective ways. I've certainly taken that charge seriously, but also didn't want to rush into conclusions without observing the working, our current system for, for at least a little while. The last year, my team began working on improvements to our economic development strategy citywide, and had planned on working with the council this year on some suggested improvements, but COVID altered that timeline some, somewhat. But I'd say one of the central strategic improvements I had planned on bringing to your attention was the need for a business registration. But during the July 20th council session, a work session actually, you almost all independently brought it up, and so I thought that the, well, you brought up independently, and along with Peter and other department directors, we took that as a cue to bring you back some substantive discussion of what a business registration might look like and how it would function, and then seek some guidance from you on what you want us to do about it. So with that in mind, I think I'd just talk for a few minutes, high level, about the purpose and practical application or function of a business registration, and then let you ask as many questions as you want, and we can talk about where you want to go. Does that sound okay, Mayor?
Yep, it sure does.
Okay, so I think I would summarize the primary purpose of a business registration, not as a, some kind of additional licensing, but rather to develop a database of businesses to allow the city to provide services more efficiently and to ensure the safety of its residents more efficiently as well. Those services include, like I mentioned, economic development support, which we already do regularly, building and planning interaction with businesses, and fire and police specifically as well. You have in the memo that I sent you last week, a long list of benefits on this topic as we envision them, both for the business community and for the city, but I just want to first highlight something I said in the staff memo, and that is, I really too truly believe that a business registration, if done right, creates a more business-friendly environment than a less business-friendly environment. And it works not as a new program or some kind of additional red tape, but rather supports existing programs whose pur, purpose is to support business growth, job retention creation, and a safe community for all. Business registrations are widely considered a best practice in the economic development world nationwide and maybe beyond. And if we had to, i- if we had had a business registration at the outset of this pandemic, it would have saved countless hours of trying to work to connect with businesses with much-needed support mechanisms and much-needed money for those businesses affected by the pandemic. So let me just highlight a few of the other benefits, again, contained in the memo, but just for discussion and talking. The first one I would say is the avoidance of unnecessary expenses for new businesses. The unfortunate reality is every year, we have a number of examples where someone has a, say, a new business, a great idea that could probably thrive, they find a building that they're excited about purchasing or leasing, and go ahead and make the, sign the deal, put a bunch of money into renovations, and then only to find out that they're, they can't either get the building to a place where it needs to be for their intended purpose, or it's really not a, a functional use of that space, and they've now lost a lot of money, and that's something we want to avoid. So having a clear path to the building and planning departments as new businesses start, or as businesses discuss renovations or expansions, and having a clear line to the building and planning departments would be a really great thing to reinforce annually. With respect to economic development, the improved ability to connect with existing businesses, to provide economic development resources, including technical assistance and funding, would be critical. I, I don't know if we're all aware here, but just to give you a sense for how it looks, there really isn't anybody who has a good way of connecting with all the businesses here in town. The chamber is fantastic, they provide a great service, they have members of about 500 members, so that's roughly a third, a little less than a third of the businesses in town. Businesses are already required to register with the Secretary of State here at this, at the, at the state level, but the data that's available to us, the local municipalities, is, is very minimal. It has a name of the business sometime, in an address, and that's really it. So it's just not a great way to connect in an efficient way with those folks. And then again, just hammer down, in the case of a pandemic like, like COVID-19 here, an efficient way to get resources and share them with that community during emergencies would be so great. A couple other things, increased efficiency and efficacy for fire and life safety inspections. I believe Laura Ratcliffe is on this evening, and she could speak to that more from fires' perspective, we want to discuss that. But I do know that it's been an ongoing issue with fire, and from day one I was here, we've chatted about the benefits of registration, to not only improve the efficiency of how often and where those inspections occur, but also with situational awareness for the firefighters as they approach a burning building, for example, of having a better sense for maybe what's contained or stored in that building and what sort of safety precautions they would need to take. I know Chief Harden has reached out to me, and we've talked about this a fair bit, about benefits to the police, about doing proactive outreach and crime prevention with the business community as well, the ability to send safety alerts and so forth. And then on our, our public work side of the house, thinking about compliance with Clean Water Act regulations, and having a better sense for who is admitting what into the water, but specifically for new businesses too, that they have this now built-in touch point to really get a good sense for what they're doing, how it may impact our wastewater system, and how they could mitigate any impacts they may be incurring. So in terms of practical function of this, switch my window here, the last thing we want to do is create a cumbersome and antiquated registration process. We'd want a streamlined process that is mobile and computer-friendly and is largely automated. I had done some initial work in looking at what tool could be used to accomplish this goal, and it turns out that our building and planning software, we're already using, it's called a Sella, has a building registration or a business registration module that's pretty much ready-made and, and could be used. It integrates with existing planning and building software, it integrates with our accounting software, and it would require ultimately very little staff interaction or management for it to function quite efficiently. And the process would look something like this for a business. They would register and then renew annually, and it doesn't have to be on a specific date, it can be whatever date the business registers initially, and then they just get prompted annually to renew that registration. And during renewal, they'd not be required to put in any new information if nothing has substantially changed with their business. Rather, they could just check the box that says, you know, does this information look good, and, and, and go on their way. And then there's also an online or mobile payment option for the registration fee that leverages an existing e-commerce platform we already have at the city, so not a huge impact there, which is great. And during that process of registration, we gather some basic information about, of course, their building, storage of chemicals, effluent, that kind of thing, like I mentioned earlier, and also some basic demographic information about the business owner, because we oftentimes have, have opportunities that come through, through my office, from the state, that are specific to, say, minority-owned businesses, or veteran-owned businesses, or female-owned businesses, that are business development opportunities, that it would be great to be able to let them know about those as they come up specifically. So again, very high level here, and staff's looking to answer any questions that you may have about the potential for a business registration, and then would seek a little guidance from you on whether or not you'd like for us to come back with a more polished program for implementation. So with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer questions, and like I mentioned, I believe we have a few other folks, looks like Chief Wooten's on here and Matthew Rucker's still, so if we want to get granular with our department-specific things, feel free.
Okay, all right, questions? Yeah, Alex?
So Seth, will this module have the ability to have a business changes hands, that that new ma, owner could come in and update that, or would it be tied to a new owner or a different registration number?
No, that's, that's a great point. So it'd be to the business and the address in most cases. What we haven't sorted out, Councilor Johnson, is for those, and Mike Sykes, like I know you've mentioned this a few times, about businesses coming in from outside the community, and, and when and where they would be required to also register. We can sort out those details, but for the most part, yes, Councilor Johnson, transfer of ownership, it would be a non-issue.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Rich, and then Mike.
Yeah, I mean, there's a piece of this that I really like. The piece where you have information, they know easily how to get to whatever service the city has. Be, oh, here, we want to have you tell us how much of this and that, the other thing you have. We already have to do that with the state fire marshal for asses and anything that's hazardous. I say, we waited, I don't have to do that anymore. But the bottom line is, the piece that bothers me is the, here, we want to know a lot about you, and it's a little bit like going online and clicking something, and pretty soon, you start getting information you didn't want. And we have to ask them for more and more information. The devil's in the details. How much information, what kind of information, how many employees you have, are you, you know, are you a veteran or a whatever? That has a nice connotation when it comes to, gee, we want to, let's do something about the Veterans Day Parade, or, or there's a program that the state has for something. But you know, there's the other half that's possible as well. So I guess slowly, not asking more than you need to know, not making people jump through hoops. The conspiracy theorist, theorist in me says, no, this is just a way to tax somebody, which you know, there is that component eventually, when you run out of money that we can use from, from whatever source now, we're going to need to come up with a way to fund it. Anyway, that's what I had.
And Councilor Kellams, I think you made some great points there, and like you said, devil's in the detail, and I think I would say that transparency here is the, is the key. One great way to think about transparency long-term with a fee associated is to put it into like an enterprise zone fund where the uses are fairly direct and explicit and transparent to everybody, and can't be used, you know, to offset costs of some other thing. So that's certainly something we can consider, and I, I would be very supportive of that. So we can make that a component as we come back to you, if that's what you want.
Mike? I got, I gotta go along with Rich in all the information. Right now, the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office or the Oregon State Police require us to document every type of hazardous material that's on the property, how it's disposed of, how it's stored, where it's stored, how many cubic feet, and everything else. So I'd, I'd oppose that. What I would rather like to see is you got ABC Electric at 113 First Street in Albany there, you just registered. You don't need to know any more than that. Like Rich said, the, the, a lot of information is already required by a business owner, and like Rich said, I don't want this to turn into another slush fund, so to speak, by the city to get more money. It's just something that, hey, here we are, and this is what we do. Anything more than that, I think is unnecessary.
Well, I think it might be good, thank you for that, Councilor Sykes. Sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean to cut into you, but I see that, that both Chief Wooten and Laura Ratcliffe are on. I don't know if they want to shine any light on the value of additional information. I, I don't profess to understand that perfectly myself, so.
Yeah, so can everybody hear me okay? I have a new webcam?
Yes, we sure can.
All right, Shane Wooten here, Fire Chief. For those of you that talked about the state fire marshal's office reporting system, I agree. I mean, that, that takes a lot of time to enter that data, and I wouldn't think we would want to set something up where people have to spend, you know, a half a day, a full day just going through what they have, the stock they have on hand. So from the conversations that we've had with Seth, we do want to make it as simple as possible, and, and really, from the fire department's perspective, just knowing what buildings or what businesses exist in certain buildings can be so beneficial to us. You know, when you start talking about strip malls or some, you know, other, you know, buildings, I recall one, I don't remember the exact details. Councilor Kellam, kind of in, in your area where your business was at, where we responded on the call, we had no idea that they were doing some rare metal work back there. And, you know, having this business registration program would help us, help us immensely, at least know that it exists, so we can make our folks aware of that. And, and just to reiterate, you know, I, I would hope we wouldn't go, or I would encourage us not to go down the path of the state fire marshal's office with all that information, because we have access to that already. So we would just be duplicating work for people.
Well, maybe you could put a link to it instead, I mean, you know.
We could ask the question, do you report to the state fire marshal's office?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Chief. Bill?
I see some benefits in there. I, I want to make sure that there's just as many benefits for businesses as there are for the city, because I, I could see, like Mike was saying, where it could become burdensome. So I guess I'm looking for a win-win. I, I think we need to have some partners in this, and the first one that comes to mind is the chamber with some outreach to businesses and tell them what we want to do, tell them what the benefits are, and see if there's interest in, in the business community. I don't want to see it evolve into a, a business license. And I liked Seth's idea of the money being into an enterprise fund or something, not just into the slush fund. The reason I say that is in my career, you know, we built traffic signals all around the state, and many, many towns required a business license. So I'd go into Clamath Falls, and I'd have to buy a business license to work there for a month to build a traffic signal for the state of Oregon, and it was nothing but a revenue generator for the city. There was no benefit to me at all. But now, it's different if you're there, permanent business, some of these benefits are, are laid out in the, in the memo that Seth has. So I'm not opposed to it. I'd like to see it be developed more, and like I say, try and partner with the business community and get their buy-in, and that makes it a win-win.
Councilor Coburn had also mentioned to you out of interest that I've had some initial discussions with the chamber about this. Janet and I sat down recently, and, you know, I think historically, this has come up more than once, both at the city and the chamber, and, and there's been some, historically, some aversion to it, I think from the chamber, at least some people at the chamber, particularly if it was thought about as a, really a thick layer of red tape that's more burdensome than beneficial. I, I'm very sensitive to that, and in discussions with Janet, I've been invited to go chat with them as well here on short order to talk a little bit more about that and start building some, some support if there is any. So happy support if there is any, so happy to report back to you on that.
Okay, all right, Alex?
I think, I think one benefit could be to the business owners, is when a person clicked on the city of Albany's link, you know, and you can have like, says, business is in town, and if you're on that registration, your business will show up, and it can go right to your website from the city's webpage, I think it'd be a wonderful service, because not everybody joins the Chamber, but if you have a business registration, you can go to city of Albany, if you're thinking about relocating here, or visiting here, you just click on that, and it will say, True Life Financial Solutions, you know, specialist in whatever type of insurance, and it can give my address and website, my phone number right there, and it's something that the city is, you know, that's a benefit to the business owner, instead of digging around the whole city, or in every website in Google, they have one-stop shopping location for everything.
Okay, other questions? Okay, Counsel, would you like to provide, what direction would you like to provide for staff?
Well, like I said, I think it's worth pursuing, I'd like to see some partnerships, and he mentioned that a little bit, so, I mean, I'm all for working on it, and trying to find partners, and, and find, find the win-win.
And I agree with, I agree with Seth's approach, but another thing to think about, though, somebody looks at our list of businesses that are registered, and they don't see theirs on there, as far as an opportunity to grow a business here, so it might be an opportunity for us to attract business as well.
Okay, Mike, thumbs up, Dick, or thumbs up, or, okay, and then Rich, what do you think, thumbs up? Okay, it looks like, is, would, is staff, would staff want to have a motion towards providing direction for, to pursuing this more, or do you have enough direction?
My thumbs up, Seth. No, thumbs up is good for me, that's how I roll, I can do the same, and I'll just tell you this, I'm going to be fairly aggressive about trying to get something back to you, and, and the reason being, we have the chance, potentially, because of the impact of this registration on, because of the impact of COVID, and how that's affected our outreach to the business community, we, it's possible that we could tap into some of the money that's been provided for us from, by the feds, to cover the cost of implementation for this, the timeline being the end of the year, so if it's possible, it seems like a good option for you, once I've given you a more polished program of sorts, or implementation process, I'm just going to be, I'm going to be aggressive on our time about that, because we don't want to miss that opportunity, if it's possible to take advantage of.
Okay, all right, I think Dick still had a question.
I'd like to ask, how much do you think that's going to cost the average business, or is it a uniform cost for everybody?
Yeah, that's a good question, Counsel Olson, I think what I'll do when I come back is I'll give you a range, and so this is what most communities have done, I'd say on average, I've surveyed and looked at a bunch of communities here, both big and small in Oregon, and anywhere between the $1,500 range is, is average. What many communities have done is for a home-based business, for example, you know, it's half the cost of a, a commercial outlet who has its own address, that's an option, some communities have said, look, there's a base, a base fee of, you know, 50 bucks or something like that, for a business, and then that would include up to five employees, and then you could do an additional amount per employee after that, I'd be inclined for a couple of flat rates personally, I think it's more simple and straightforward, but I'll bring some options to you to consider.
Well, as long as it's negligible like that, I'm not opposed to it, it's fine.
Okay, all right, I think you've got enough direction.
Yep, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Seth. Next is the attendance policy for citizen advisory groups, and Holly?
Yeah, for you, Mayor and Counselors, what I have for you is not nearly as glamorous as it's all, but hopefully available to be nonetheless.
So Holly, Holly, I think you got feedback going, you have two on, or one?
No, just one, oh goodness, and my camera wasn't on, there's still feedback?
It's echoey.
Okay.
Look, I see Peter leaving, he's probably going to grab you to go to his desk.
Okay, I will hop into Peter's office real quick.
Okay. Even our own city devices and city hall don't work real well at times, sorry about that, Holly, it was just real echoey, and I think Peter's got your mic off on it.
There we go, all right, sorry about that, you know, okay, so what I have for you is an updated policy, a recommended policy from staff related to Advisory Board attendance, it starts on page 10 of your packet, you'll notice that on the draft resolution, there's a lot of red text, what's in black is existing policy, so that sort of leaves us, leads us into our issue, we don't have a lot of guidance as it relates to attendance for our members. As I noted in the staff report, the lack of clarity with the current policy has led to a lot of frustration through the years, both for our members and for our staff liaisons, we have a past practice of counting absences as excused if someone gives us any advance notice, so regardless of how short that notice may be, if they tell us five minutes before a meeting, we consider that an excused absence, and we don't have a limitation on excused absences. So where we find ourselves is we have a policy that we more or less can't or don't enforce, we went out to other communities to see how they addressed this issue, and it became pretty clear that our policy is lacking. So in an effort to tighten things up and provide clearer expectations and guidance for our volunteers, there's a draft policy that provides for up to five missed, I'm sorry, up to three consecutive meetings, or five meetings in a rolling 12-month period. And you'll see on the city comparison that that's, that's still quite generous, to be honest, most of them have two consecutive, maybe three or four in a rolling 12-month period. The other thing this policy does, and I'll just highlight a quick piece of language for you, I should point out, nothing in this policy seeks to modify or inhibit the relationship that appointing council members have with their board members, right, board members serve at the discretion of the council, so this is just to provide guardrails, basically, and set clear expectations for our volunteers. There's a section in there in the fourth whereas statement that reads, members will seek to be sufficiently informed on a subject, I'll just highlight that it says seek to, that's intentional, to make it clear that it's about effort and not expertise, so our members may or may not have professional or amateur experience that directly relates to their time, you know, to their work on that board, but it's about effort, right, it's reasonable, and the council would expect that volunteers would seek to be informed on the subjects that they're supposed to be informing council on. So that's one section, and I would ask for counsel's direction on the number of absences, if you feel that is too generous, or perhaps not generous enough, we tried to strike a compromise between what we allow now and what most communities expect for attendance, and it sets a clear expectation for participation as well, we want to be sure members know that they need to read packets in advance and be prepared for discussion. So that's a, at a high level, what we're trying to aim, oh, and I would also point out that we would distribute this to all current and future Advisory Board members, we have a recruitment coming up at the end of the year for new appointments, we'd make sure all new appointments get poppy, and we relay to them the new expectations for attendance, and we would have staff liaisons go over it with current members as well, before we started enforcing any new attendance policy. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, questions, Bill?
The only thing I don't like is if you fail to attend consecutive meetings, you're off the committee, in other words, you're, you're going to be presented with the forfeiture action and council thing, I'd like to see some intermediate steps, there ought to be some communication between the chairperson of the committee and the member that's not showing up, and if it was one of my appointees, I wouldn't be offended by a call or email from the chairman saying, hey, your appointee, you know, Joe Blow hasn't been coming to the meeting, you know, because I had no problem at all calling Joe Blow and saying, hey, if you want to be on this committee, you have to go, if you want off, that's fine too, I need to know so I can appoint somebody else, I'd like you to stay, but, so I, I'm missing all of that interaction between the chairman and the counselor, and we're jumping right to your.
And we could, so that's our current practice, I fully anticipate we would continue to do that, to have either the chair or the staff liaison reach out to that volunteer directly, we could certainly prescribe that in policy, but I would fully anticipate that we would continue to do that, this is just giving us a number to stick to, to be able to point back and say, the policy says no more than three, you've now missed four, we've tried to, you know, contact you, and so I should provide some clarification, what typically happens, we attempt to reach out to an individual about their attendance, and they're not responsive, so they're not returning our calls, or they're not getting back to us by email, and I, my recollection is, we have had some that we forwarded along to the appointing counselor, I know I've worked with Bessie on a couple, where the individual wasn't taking our call, and so we asked her to see if maybe she could reach out, I do anticipate that we'd continue to do that.
Okay, Alex?
So I would appreciate, you know, knowing about, you know, I reach out to my appointees every month, just to typically want to have coffee and just catch up, but, you know, after two absences, a phone call would be nicer, or just an email, oh, by the way, when the staff leaves on, that person has missed, your appointee has missed his second meeting, or her second meeting, would you please check in with them, and see if they're still interested in participating?
Okay, Rich?
That was basically the same thought process I had, I just lost everybody for a little while, didn't know which thing had come up, so, yeah, after, after a couple of missed, having, having staff or the chair of whatever committee contact the counselor would be a good thing.
It keeps us on our toes.
Okay, any others? So, so regarding with the resolution, over this policy then, I mean, it looks like maybe you're wanting a little bit changes that is suggested over the timing of missing of meetings, but what about the rest of the text that's in this resolution? Are you okay with that? Mike says thumbs up, anybody else? Okay, and Alex?
I think I'm okay, again, if we can expand this a little bit, so there's something between, you've missed three meetings and you're out, you know, more communication in there, it's unfortunate that we've got a detail that's step by step by step exactly what we're going to do, because some individual decides they don't want to attend the meetings, but Holly, you mentioned that, that some of that's already being done, maybe more of a, an informal process, like you say, when you reached out to Bessie, I don't know how much we want to beat this thing into the ground, but maybe there ought to be some verbiage that addresses that middle area there.
And I think that's a good point, it could be, if someone who fails to attend three consecutive meetings, your appointing counselor will be notified, you know, that might maybe, when they see this policy, they have some accountability, I remember one member, he, he notified me that he was going to miss meetings, because he was going to go through chemo, you know, and, but it was great to get the, the heads up on that, but if you had that language, that who fails to attend three consecutive meetings, then your appointing counselor will be notified, that maybe that's.
Well, here's another.
Uh-huh.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, Bill, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I stepped on you there, maybe, I'll throw this out, if, if you've missed two meetings, two consecutive meetings, then that kicks in a process where the, the counselor, the appointing counselor will be notified, because then I can call up this person, or try and get ahold of him, and say, hey, you've missed two consecutive meetings, you realize if you've missed one more, you're off the committee, is there a problem, do you want to stay on, if you've been sick, you know, try and work with them, we all know how hard it is sometimes to find people willing to serve on, so that's one suggestion.
Is the council okay with revising that language, then?
I am.
Okay, Dick, are you? Mike's got.
Okay, but I have another question.
Okay, Dick, and then I think Rich has one, yeah, Dick?
Say, my appointment misses the five meeting, gets kicked off, do I have the ability to reappoint that person?
Yeah, so Dick, it's, I think it looks like we're having that.
My appointment is a business guy, and he has to go to Brazil for a month, and he misses a bunch of meetings, and he comes back, and I think he's a really excellent person to be on that committee, I think I ought to be able to reappoint him.
Right, like, I think what's being suggested now is getting away from three to that five, and it's going to be, if you miss two consecutive, the counselor will be notified, so it's not kicking him off, they just would be notified of their absence, are you okay with that language?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, Rich?
Yeah, along that same vein, the, the person who is at peril of being kicked off is, goes back to the coun, to the counselor who, who appointed them, and they're the ones who are saying yes or no at that point, right? I mean, so it's, you missed three, and it's my guy, and he missed three, she missed three, they come back to me and said, hey, you know, my, my left arm just fell off, and I'm had to, whatever it is, there may be a good reason why, and as long as the counselor has some kind of judgment available, I don't have a problem with it.
Well, and I think it would help, because at least if it's two meetings, the counselor's notified, then they can, you know, contact that person to see, and they might think, you know, I don't have time, or my work has changed, and they, you know, might want to just go ahead and resign then, or you can find out if they've been sick, so, but it would be helpful, and then to make sure it kind of, you know, reduces the amount of absentees that, you know, we get on with the meetings, so, I think, I think, was it Bill, did you have first hand, Alex?
Yeah, so, just follow up what Rich was saying, that it does say that the, the forfeiture action will be submitted to the city council for acceptance, so I think Rich is right, the city council would have to vote on removing that person, and like Dick said, the, the counselor might have a good explanation as to why his appointee hasn't been there, and has resolved the issue.
Okay, Alex?
You know, I agree with Rich and, and Bill, I think if a person's going to be gone for an extended, extended period of time, it might be advantageous for the council to notify us, so we're not worried about it, right, so kind of be proactive with being notified, I'm going to be gone in Brazil for three months or four months, let us know ahead of time, so it won't be an issue, if some, if our appointee says, well, Dick's person's been gone this period of time, oh, he let us know that person's going to be gone, there's a reason for it, and we accept that.
Right, and most committee members, if they are going to be taking a trip, you know, they will kind of notify after, when they attend a committee meeting, I just know over the years, sometimes people's work changes, and it's just kind of on the back burner about, you know, making sure that they respond, you know, to a, you know, when they get the email for an upcoming meeting, so this, but I think by having the language in here, that'll, it'll give us some awareness to the commission members, and make sure they have due diligence too, so, so is everyone okay, Mike, if they miss two consecutive meetings, that their counselor will be, okay, is that okay, thumbs up on all that, is that okay, Holly?
That's, absolutely, it's, it's your policy, I would just emphasize that we value our volunteers like none other, I, you know, I don't want to discourage anyone from participating, it's just, we've found that not having clear guidance in this area, it's left it ripe for abuse in some cases, certainly, there's, there's been instances when. Certainly there's, there's been instances when people have had medical issues, they needed to be out for an extended period. Uh, that's understandable, those things come up. Uh, but to your point, Mayor, what we've seen is that people will volunteer. They have the best of intentions. They want to be involved. They want to give to their community. And then their workload changes or they have too many things on their plate and we only see them twice a year. Uh, and that's not a good use of that committee's time. So, um, being able to refer it to the appointing counselors so that there's a conversation that can be had and see if the person should continue, wants to continue. Uh, and maybe that'll help with this process. So I will work on modifying the language and bring that back to you.
Okay, for the, um, the next, not this council meeting, but in two weeks, will that be ready?
Okay, and so that would be the intent is to have it in place before the end of the year, before we start making new appointments, so we can distribute this to, uh, potential candidates.
Okay, and when will you be starting to, um, do the recruitment process of note of, uh, letting the awareness that people can apply for boards and commissions? When is that timing?
So I will, I will start next week probably on notifying incumbents whose terms are expiring. And then we open it up for the citywide recruitment the first week of November and it runs through the first week of December.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you, Holly. Yeah, thank you. Okay, um, next is business from the council and Bill, you're up on the top of the screen. Nothing, Mike?
Yes. Where McDonald's and Rigoberto's Mexican restaurant on Pacific Boulevard is. That street right there gets so balled up where people are starting to stop with the back of their vehicles in Pacific Boulevard. And it gets to be very, very interesting. I've only seen one officer stop and turn on her lights. It was a female officer, turn on her lights and get out and clean the mess up. But, um, I would really like to see some kind of more enforcement there. So before we have one heck of a wreck, because people are so focused on trying to get in that line to get their food, that they don't realize where they're parked and what they're doing and how they're balling up that intersection. There's times that I thought we're going to have a wreck and it's going to be a good one.
So did, so maybe Ron Irish can work with them and maybe they need some striping on their lot of an arrow coming. So people will come from the west side, not the east to, if they have to stack up. Or if they can put a sign up to say, if, if, if the driveway's full, you need to be coming in from the west.
Well, I've seen them stack two or three outside the driveway, all the way out onto Pacific, stopped.
Wow.
And it's not a good, it's not a good thing and it's, it's, uh, kind of hazardous, but that's what, that's what I had.
Maybe staff.
We'll take Counsel Sykes's suggestion and, and take a look at it and see what solutions there might be.
I would say four o'clock to 5:30 is a good time to take a look at that.
Yes. Or lunchtime is another good time.
Yeah. I guess I.
Coffee stand.
Yeah.
You see it, you see it at, at Starbucks, you see it at Dutch Brothers on a regular basis. And I'll have sometimes three cars, well, on, on Saniam, a lot of times, uh, there will be, you know, cars out in the, in the traffic lanes.
Well, I think that the police can ticket them for in, uh, blocking traffic or impeding the normal flow or causing a hazard or something. But if you start writing a few of those tickets, pretty soon the word gets out again that you, you know, tickets are designed to do one thing, that's correct behavior. That's, that's all they're there for. And, uh, I think we need to start correcting some behavior around some of these establishments.
Well, wouldn't it make sense to go to the business and say, listen, this is happening. We're going to need to do something about it for safety sake and let those coffee places or the, the, the restaurants come up with a better solution of their own before we start giving people tickets?
Well, I, I don't have a problem with that, but there again, something has to stop because then, Rich, uh, the liability, who, who ends up having the liability? The City of Albany because we allowed it to happen? The restaurant because they let it happen? Or because the people that are starting to stop it in the street and don't know how to get out of the way? Or do they take the liability?
From an insurance perspective, it's going to be the person that, that gets in the way.
Yep.
Exactly.
Okay, anything else, Mike?
No, that's it.
All right, Alex?
Nope, I have nothing. Not today.
Dick, do you have anything?
I do not, no, thank you.
Okay, and Rich?
I have a couple of things.
Mm-hmm.
I was driving, I don't know which one, Lions or, you know, anyway, the coming in from Corvallis. I get to City Hall and on the left-hand side, there is a, um, people have just mowed the lawn in front of the bank and blew all the grass clippings out into the street. Now, I don't know if that is legal, illegal, or whatever it is, but whatever it is, it shouldn't had ought to be happening. Uh, and that's not the only place you see it happening. I, I don't know, can we look at city code and see if there is some, something that we have done about it or not done about it? Because it's, well, I mean, quick, let's, let me, let me dump my garbage out in the street. That's not a good idea. And the second thing, um, we just went through, um, Parks Department with their new fees. And I heard that we were going to be getting a new fee structure from the libraries. And I didn't see anything on the, um, on the white list, White Mark. Uh, maybe it's just because I'm blind, I don't know, but I'd like to see something happen.
And well, I'll get the answer for that as well.
Thank you.
And I do, oh, um, our Facebook, City Facebook page has done awareness about what goes in the screen. And I know that is, you know, out in the gutter and I know that's been mentioned about grass clippings. But yeah, they're probably won't be seeing the grass mowed as much, but in the springtime, it's a good, um, awareness to get out. So, because that just goes right down into the storm drain, so. Um, okay, anything else, Rich? Nope, okay, all right. Uh, the only thing I have is this week is the League of Oregon Cities Conference. So that is on, um, all day Wednesday and Thursday. So I'll be attending those sessions and it's all going to be virtual, so it won't be out of town this time, so. With that, um, and Peter, do you have anything?
Yes, I'll, I'll be there as well at the League of Oregon Cities and looking forward to that. I wanted to, uh, mention to you that you had on your agenda for Wednesday evening, a special presentation from the fire department. Um, unfortunately, uh, that person is unavailable that evening. So that, uh, life-saving award will have to delay that to, uh, to another date. And, uh, there is, just for your general information, there's a lieutenant, uh, promotion process ongoing in the police department. And we'll keep you apprised of that as well. And that's all I have.
Okay, so totally take off the agenda, not, number three for the special presentation.
That is correct.
All right, got it. So, okay, I think that's it. Staff have anything else this evening? So, okay, with that then, um, we adjourn folks at a time. Thank you.